So for the pledge.
Canadians don't respect.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suzy Rolso.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salasweedle.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here. Motion for the consent agenda.
I'll support.
Discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salasweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, before we go to public comment, we turn it over to Charlie. He's going to give us a little presentation on Public Power Week.
No, no. That's Charlie West.
Thanks. Welcome. That's on. Thanks. Just real quick, wanted to mention that just like the first week, first full week in October every year, first full week in October every year is celebrated across about 2,000 municipal electric systems countrywide, celebrating Public Power Week, something that I think WOOL was very fortunate to have resisted. The urge to sell the utility, sell the electric utility for many years. Most utilities have, but there are, like I said, about 2,000 public power communities in the country. To give our customers an idea of what that means for them, our customers are five times less likely to experience an outage compared to the surrounding utility. And at the same time, our electric rates are about 27% cheaper for our residential customers. So that translates to about a million and a half dollars in retail rate savings for our customers across residential, commercial, and industrial. And as part of the city, we contribute about 10% of the general fund through pilot payments. So I think we all saw some of the additional benefits of Public Power this last storm. But like to highlight anecdotally, didn't, don't have any definitive metrics, but WOOL was a very busy place the Friday and Saturday after the storm hit. Heard from one local restaurant owner that it was theirs, the Friday night dinner was their single biggest Friday night they've ever had in business. So we are very proud to support the community and do our little part to make this a great place. I appreciate what you all do to do the same.
Thanks, Charlie.
That's a, that's something I never thought about, the positive economic impact when we have power.
Yeah, we were, we were swamp busy that night, too. I couldn't figure out why, but kind of makes sense, huh?
What'd you say, no light bulbs this round?
Would those LED light bulbs?
Well, at an old Edison law.
Well, it's a short agenda. We gotta do something.
Don't let these people get bored around here. Public comment.
I'm feeling unprepared today.
We should talk about various attendants after this.
Hi, I'm Pam Rowley and I live at 804 East Main. And yep, I'm going to talk about Copper Rock because it's important. And also, that's all I can think about and talk about, like my family and friends tell me ever since June. Since June this year, we are blindsided by Copper Rock's plan to block a 44 unit in a carpet complex and restaurant in the middle of our neighborhood. And our runaway community since then has been bullied, disrespected, and dismissed. Not to mention the fact that we've had questions and concerns that still have not been addressed. I believe the first planning committee was July 10th. At that time, our questions weren't answered. And I also remember Mr. Patrick Bailey had written a letter that was read. And he lives at 823 Avery. And his driveway would be directly across from the proposed driveway to the apartment complex. And he had written a letter and none of his concerns or questions were addressed, which was very disappointing because he's lived here for 42 years. And like I said, his driveway would be right across from the apartment complex. I don't feel that his worries were worth. The early part of August, I sent a request to have parking spaces removed in front of our home in 804 East Main, as well as the homes of my neighbors to the east and to the west. Why? Because we reviewed Copper Rock's site plan many times. And they do not have nearly enough parking spaces available for neither their restaurant nor their apartment complex. So what does that mean? That means that they're going to be parking in front of our homes on the south side of East Main. And I can tell you that if just very few cars are parked there, we have no visibility. It's impaired. So I wrote to Mr. Burns and I was told at that time that I needed to get permission from various neighbors, as well as Copper Rock's two LLCs across the street. So I wrote Copper Rock and of course didn't get any information right away. However, Greg Taylor did exise some parking spots on either side of our driveways, but this still doesn't allow us to leave our driveways safely. And then there will be parking on the north side of East Main. And if you're parking at our side with a left-hand turn lane, the lanes will be very narrow and dangerous. Additionally, can you really imagine people attempting to parallel park on Main Street when cars are traveling at 50 miles an hour? Anyway, I was told that once I received all permissions needed from these various places, that Mr. Burns would then consider it. So my question to the city council, as well as the local police, Officer Hurst, shouldn't you not have a say when it comes to the removal of our parking spaces? Since it involves the safety of your citizens. I encourage anyone and everyone to come down and witness different stage parking scenarios to actually see how dangerous parking on the south side of East Main is. And it doesn't matter what is built across the street, whether it's an apartment building, a restaurant, a haunted house, any business should have all onsite parking, period. Willie, while you know the story of Horatio Street, thankfully, the city council heard our voices and voted in favor to oppose its vacation. By the way, we neighbors are paying thousands of dollars to an attorney to navigate the legal system so we can hold on to our street. Why is this allowed? Why is this happening to us? This brings me to the September 11th planning meeting. We neighbors were prepared. We had neighborhood meetings where we shared expertise. We did research as well. I personally interviewed management of Stone Ridge Apartments, as well as Pebble Beach Apartments. I also spent time talking to MDOT. Not only do we citizens have many years of being east siders, but above all, we have common sense. Anyway, when we got to the meeting, we were told we had three minutes and we had prepared for five minutes. We were not allowed to repeat our concerns. And so a lot of people read their, whatever they had prepared so quickly, you couldn't even hear it. And I think, I know I had a five-minute speech prepared. And so I had to quickly try and highlight what other people hadn't spoken about. And, but I also think that our voices weren't heard. I think the committee members were too busy timing us. Two of the six criteria for the site plan were turned down. There should have been more discussion on the other criteria. We've looked through the WOOL's master plan many times in the city ordinances and certain things don't line up. Perhaps our attorney can make legal sense of it. The other thing that no one is talking about is the fact that Copper Rock Apartments don't have onsite management. When I spoke with the manager from Pebble Beach, she was appalled by this. So many things can go wrong with that many people. And we don't have the policing down on the east side that we used to have. It is my request that both the city council and the local police department take an active role in the decisions to remove the parking spaces on the south side of East Main from 730 East Main to Grove. To allow these spaces to remain is dangerous to us, as well as semis, cars, especially motorcycles, traveling through. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Pam. Anybody else?
I missed that issue. Don't we have to clear anything we do with MDOT? Anything we do on Main Street, don't we have to?
Yep. But we have to assume the viability and do all the light work.
We can initiate it if we can.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Hi, Rowley, 804 East Main. Again, about Copper Rock and, and the parking, but slightly different. So you guys passed ordinance 2302 in April of this year. And it states, no vehicle shall be parked on Main Street from Hudson Street to Jefferson Street between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. from November 1st through March 31st. My assumption is that for snowplow reasons. So we're going to build this monstrosity of a building in an area that's not, no parking on the city streets. Where the planning commission, it looks like some of them are pushing to get it through. They're going to allow them to not have enough parking spots for the tenants. At least that's the way it looks like it's headed to me. Are we going to change this ordinance to go down there before they create the problem? Or are we going to wait till it's a problem and then go back and try to fix it? So the multi-use allows for off-site parking. But most of that looks like it's geared towards businesses that are not operating between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. So it doesn't make sense, the discussion that we had in that meeting led, to not have adequate parking for all tenants. They're not going to go out there at 10 o'clock and move them into the restaurant parking lot. They're not going to go out there at 2:00 and move them down somewhere else. The closest would be the church, although that's not public parking. That's the church's parking. They can't park in the Kaiser's, that's their parking lot. It seems like this is being ignored. And I asked for clarification on it last time. I didn't get anything. I'm hoping somebody did some research over the last couple of weeks to let me know how we're going to handle this, because I think it's a big problem. And ignoring it is the wrong thing to do. And one more disconnect in this whole thing. We talked to Officer Hurst after the meeting. The sign coming into WOOL, that we did drive by just before we got here, says, "No parking on public streets." So either the ordinance is wrong or the sign's wrong, but they don't line up. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, we went into the action, that's the agenda, no old business, new business, sale of police shotguns, too.
Really brief. The local police department has three 170 shotgun that we no longer use anymore. We've all transitioned to the patrol rifle. In fact, this past year, we didn't even qualify with them because nobody uses them. So they get shot, get clean, they get put away for another year. So we need to, we need to purchase another patrol rifle for our newest officer, Officer Rader. We'd like to sell those shotguns and put that money towards another rifle for the local officer. I don't have a good price. I did call Hilltop Sports today just to say, hey, look, this is what we have. What is a, what would a good price or an offer be? They said anywhere from 150 to 200 bucks a rifle, for a shotgun. And I did contact Jim Fowler to do a price line, but they haven't seen yet, so.
How many is there?
Just three.
People, what, what does it actually, patrol rifle do other than what a shotgun? Because I understand the ballistics of the bullets and everything, but what advantage do you have?
Patrol rifles, the ones we carry are the AR-15 style rifle. Shoot the same, similar military round as a M16, but not automatic. But they do give us a stand-up distance of up to 300 yards. We can identify a target that far away. And they will penetrate armor. So that's why we carry the, plus we can carry with a shotgun, the way they're loaded, we can carry five rounds of shotgun in the, in the, in the shotgun itself with the rifle, up to 28 rounds.
Any other questions for the chief? Motion to approve the sale. I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion. Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salasweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
All right, the warden commission reports, Cliff.
I have nothing, sir.
Jim, I are all coming up.
Top of the month, I've got nothing.
Next week, same. Acting managers report.
All right, well, I only have a few things. So first, a couple of project updates, Grindel and Shepherd. We had paving started on that Friday. Most of that's complete. They're doing, trying to do site restoration next. Still dealing with a few issues that are minor, like nail boxes and that kind of thing, but we're working with the engineer on that. Monroe, they're pouring the concrete for the curb and doing work behind the 200 block of East Main, which is the parking lot adjacent to the city hall here. And they're looking at possibly pouring the base coat early next week on that project. So that one's moving along quite well, too. Police Department report. Mr. Bird, you mentioned that there's 113 traffic stops from the beginning of September to September 28th. Chief, do you want to add anything additional to your?
Well, we, we updated those. In fact, I handed everybody on the board here a updated version. Up to, up through the end of the month, it was 128 stops. I got a list of all the streets where they were stopped. And far as, and we are just going to start downloading our, our electronic speed signs. We neglected that over the past year or so. We're going to start downloading those every three months and give you guys a report on what, what we see, just to, you know, a quick, general reference. So on your paper work there, there's a, we did do a study for the North Hudson signs. And we are still searching to buy, or looking to buy a portable speed trailer. The one we have is so old, we can't update it. So, and I've talked to Spartan Police. They purchased one. I've got a request for a quote, so we'll see what we can do. Because this street here is going to be finished soon and that's going to be a potential problem for us.
I have one other item then. The Park Master Plan, there's a public hearing scheduled for November 6th at 9:90 North Washington. That's the location. Well, we have the street name now. It's been a while.
Washington?
Washington, yes, I'm sorry. We toured on the road also. Yeah, the family name is what I was trying to say.
Decels.
Decels, yes. So there's a hearing on November 6th at, at to the Park Master Plan. And then once that's completed, the city can take steps and add extra property.
Is that?
We own it or it's not in the state.
Is that during the next parks meeting, that when November 6th is, or is it a separate hearing?
I don't know how we live on that, the approach is right now.
Yeah, November 6th is not a parks meeting.
Not a parks. Oh, maybe, I don't keep that. Suzy takes care of that for me. She sends me, maybe, it is a council meeting. Suzy sends me, maybe, and I show up.
That's all we have for management.
Thanks, Brad.
I figured Perry wasn't here, so I should say something.
Thank you.
That's, you know, it seemed, it seemed, you know, like something got lost.
I appreciate my team, though.
Just a real question. I know a lot of money was spent on the museum steps. Is that, it's kind of like stymie? And I'll be honest, I think it looks like they put some of the blocks on the porch to make the pillars. Anybody else look at that? I mean, for a historic building, it.
I believe the building department, they were built incorrectly.
The steps?
No.
No, the pillars, apparently they were, they weren't tall enough. So then they, the inspector had them come in and they extended them out. So they're going to come off, they're going to put in a different type of structure now.
Oh, good.
To make it look like that. So they, they will eventually be gone.
Nice, okay. So there, is there a timeline? Because it's been a long time.
I couldn't answer.
They're waiting for the.
Backorder of material.
The, yeah.
What do you call?
Raywording.
Yep.
They're waiting for that.
Weird, okay.
Yep.
Just my, fill in for Perry, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Solid work.
Hopefully my election.
Somebody better be.
She brought that up and Rich was at the start of that.
Yeah.
And now Rich is back and.
So we can blame him?
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Any questions for Rich? All right, appointments. We got one for DDA, which to me is a pretty easy game.
Yep.
Charlie Jeffrey from Fenton Baker wants to serve on DDA. And we may have more openings soon, right? If the rumors are true. So I'm going to appoint Charlie unless there's any objections.
No.
Good, perfect. Easy. So we'll have Charlie to DDA and Suzy, you can get him stuff for Thursday.
I sure can.
Good. Tell him he buys lunch first meeting.
Okay.
He would.
He would, yeah. Leah, councilwoman.
Welcome, Rich.
Hi. A couple of things. I like the, I like the wares in the police department where you're getting cars. And it's after a while, it'll create a pattern. That's the goal, correct?
Yes.
I like the six a day, three a shift. That we've had people say, you guys were helping and forcing them up. And I think that shows that we do have, we are out and we are doing our job. Second of all, I'd like to welcome Rich back. Rich is a neat guy. Got to be friends. If you want anything done in the city, like extra snowplowing or whatever, just bring Suzy home. And he would do it, but it's kind of fun having, it's like families all back together. That's exactly how it feels, so. Good job.
Thank you. Here we go, Cliff.
I want to say something nice about Greenville. I know.
Did you hit your head?
No, I, I drive at the Pink Arrow Games and I have for a while. And I got to say, the people from Greenville were the friendliest bunch of people all night long. And they got warmed and they were still nice when we were taking them back to their cars. It was just impressive. The other thing. The Copper Rock is stopped, correct? I mean, you have a lawyer engaged and.
The vacation process is working in itself.
Correct.
I don't know.
Well, so.
I was out of town for planning, so I don't know what happened at this point.
So planning to, I believe it was B and C or C and D got turned down. But those are the ones that, according to the city attorney that was here, they can make, they can come back and make revisions to that to try to get that passed. I'm quite sure that'll be on planning commission's meeting probably next Monday. I haven't gotten my packet yet, but.
And I'm talking to Jessica tomorrow, so I can check on that.
Aren't they two different things, the street and the property itself? Aren't those two different?
Yeah, but they can, the.
B and, B and C or C and D, excuse me, C and D were basically the same order. It's just changed up a little bit. So if you don't pass one, then.
Right.
The second one.
You could still pass it, but they, they may not be able to get the street. And therefore, it goes back to whatever.
Right.
Well, at this point, they want to do the 44 unit with the street vacation, right? Or they changed their.
I think the only thing they changed was some driveways, right? The plan for the building is the same, but.
Find out at next planning commission.
Yeah, until you get a, I mean, nobody's seen anything, right? So there's no prints out there. I had one.
Well, the reason I brought it up is I didn't want the people that are here tonight to think that we're just disregarding what you're saying. It's just the, the process.
It's just a standard.
Yeah, one of the things that was asked that night was putting a driveway exiting out back out onto M21. And as we know from previous ones, MDOT's been kind of stingy in giving those up. It was requested by the residents living down there that we have MDOT look into that. And at one point, it sounded like they wanted to let Copper Rock dive into that. And I made a motion that we let Andy from Williamson Works, right? Make that phone call and talk to MDOT to see if that's even feasible or possible. Because after all, Andy is very, very good at his job. He leads us very, very well. So and Jessica was all in favor of it to our city attorney. So that's how it got left. And like I said, we haven't gotten the packet. We haven't heard one way or another, so I have no idea. I hear rumors of, yep, a curb cut. I hear rumors of a building's going to shrink. I hear rumors of restaurants going away. I hear rumors of the dumpster enclosure is going to get bigger. You hear lots of things, but until you get a black and white piece of paper in front of you, it's all up in the air. So that's how it got left. I'm assuming it's coming back up, isn't it? Or don't you know?
I believe it will be on the agenda.
So stay tuned.
Well, I would keep voicing your concerns. I just didn't want you to think we were blowing you off. We're not. It's just, some things are not in our purview to deal with.
Some of the questions that are always asked and it's called public comment for a reason. We can't get into debate. We'll get absolutely nowhere. I know it sounds, it feels like we're not paying attention and we're not listening. But please understand, we do hear, we do listen. This isn't the first time that people have said, well, you're, you know, we're not hearing back. Well, we're always directed by our attorney to not get into a debate. So that's how that works.
Can I say one more thing about the parking real quick? Just real quick, because.
Sure.
Yeah. So. Pam Rowley, 804 East Main. I did talk to MDOT and I talked to you. I asked whoever was in charge of the parking spots in the city. And MDOT does have the ultimate, ultimate decision, but it's mostly with the city. So if, like I requested, you know, that Officer Hurst and the city council take a look at our parking spots and our visibility problems, you can make that decision to take those parking spots away. I don't, it's my understanding that you don't have to ask MDOT to take them away. So that's the information I have, just to. Sorry.
You guys should have just sat up front. Do all the steps.
It's good to get a step.
Yeah. Some car, though.
So as far as the planning commission, we got three minutes. People came with way more than that. They were timed, they were cut off, they didn't get through everything they wanted to. It wasn't about debate. It was about, we were not heard. People did not get a chance to voice their concerns. So I don't think it's a debate issue. I think it's, everybody got cut off. And thank you for giving us five minutes here. But it's not in the agenda that we only had three. As a matter of fact, we were told we had five before we got to the meeting. And then it got changed. And I don't lie, but Jared Barker said the previous committee meeting, that it was important to get all public comment out. And then the next meeting, it was limited. So I don't think we heard and I don't think we were debating anything.
I'll, I'll speak on that before, are you all set?
Sure.
Okay. When I first got on this council a long time ago, it was only three minutes. One of the things that I ran on, and I know Jim did, and I know Marty did. was being accessible and transparent. So we had changed it, I think, in my first year to five minutes here. And I don't think outside of maybe two or three instances, at least two during the biodigester, and I think one during some other stuff, have I ever even held people to the five minutes? Because I do think people deserve to be heard. That being said, I can't set policy for other boards. I did not know it was three minutes either until. Who came to you?
Bruce, okay.
Yep. Yep, so. The five minutes here, I want people to know, is a deliberate decision by the majority of this council. And that rarely, if you're being respectful and you're, I'm not going to cut you off in the middle of the line. Because I do believe people deserve to be heard. But I cannot control, I don't, you guys have a public comment time? I don't think they were giving you public.
I'd say. I'd have to look at.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I was there.
I'd say, we've been known to have public comment, but we don't, we don't get the same level of public comment. So the less frequent nature of it, we tend to handle it a little bit differently.
Maybe that's something to look at, because a lot of people don't know, they didn't know, that there's different limits for different boards. So maybe it's something where the.
Other than you can always come in with somebody else and take their five minutes. So if you feel you have a ten minute, you can.
That I think, no.
That only works.
That's board specific, too.
Yeah, like Board of Education, you can do that.
Right. I mean, I think we would allow it. Continue.
Yeah, we've been, I think during the police chief stuff, we allow them to go with.
Because I think somebody offered something their time, and they accept it.
Here?
No, during that.
Oh.
They chose not to take it, but somebody did offer them their three minutes.
But maybe it's simply just get the board chairs together, especially now that most of the appointments are done, and say, let's come up with a uniform procedure that works for all the residents. Because people don't know, when they go to a board meeting, they don't know it's different board by board by board. And I don't think that's necessarily fair.
Yeah, and if somebody were to call city council during the day and say, hey, how many minutes do I have for a public comment on board meeting? Whoever answers your phone might think, oh, to my assistant at council meeting. They might, we must be talking about city council, when actually, they're asking for planning commission the next Monday, you know? So.
Because I was just shocked when I sat there and I heard three minutes. And I was like, wait, we're, I thought we were five.
So I feel like that time limit is very cosmetic, right? It's meant to be able to care of somebody who's being disrespectful and unproductive, or. But if people are taking time out of their day to come to any meeting, I think the least you can do, the bare minimum you can do is listen to them in their mouth. I agree that we shouldn't respond in certain circumstances, and I agree that it should not be a question and answer, because you can't ask one person to speak for an entire board in a city full of residents. That's unfair, but I do believe that you should allow the open dialogue. And I, like I said, I'd rarely cut anybody off that way. Especially if there's something saying something nice about me, they can go fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes.
Oh, hey.
No.
You meant five minutes.
That's fine. I'll shut this whole thing down. Jim?
Rich, welcome back. And I just want to let everybody know, tonight's Powerball is worth one billion dollars. So if you're home, you might want to drop in two bucks.
If you don't see Jim at the next meeting. Cardboard cut out a Jim with a.
I bought a golf course somewhere.
Oh. Notice he said somewhere. That's an invitation. He's not going to tell us where to. I'm extremely happy that Rich is back. I was disappointed when he left. I understand, like, he left, it was a great career move for him. But I'm so glad you're home, and I am going to be happier that you're back.
Make a motion to join at seven thirty-four.
I'll support.
Motion in a second to get out of here, although the favor is synchronized by saying that. I oppose. We are.